Good evening and welcome to the City of Isani Committee of a Whole Meeting for Tuesday, August 18th. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If we could all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get it. Doing roll call, all council members are present. I'm sure Councilman Burgley is running late as always. Any public comment at this time? No public comment. Let's move on to our items. E1 Liquor Store Updates. Mr. John Jacoby.
Okay. Gross profit for the months of May through July was about 29.04%. Our largest sales increase ever have obviously been from the middle of March on and it hasn't slowed at all. So, we've had five record-breaking months of sales. As was reported on this July sales report, we are on pace for nearly a $4 million sales year. I think we're going to surpass that by September. That's my prediction. So, obviously with the pandemic, it's brought forth a lot more sales than we anticipated. We've been following the guidelines as close as possible for the CDC since we're an essential business. I've had employees following the mask mandate. Also been sanitizing doors, door handles on a regular basis. This is kind of a reiteration of what I had talked about before. I have stickers on the floor and keeping customers six feet apart. Next item, the Seventh Annual Support the Troops Drive went well. We raised $92.36 in donations for the event, which went through July 5th. And then we had a late ad. Someone made a nice basket for the troops as well. And all of the proceeds went to Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Isani. Next item, we faced many out of stock since the pandemic started. Supplies are doing their best to accommodate any way they can. We're selling many ready-to-drink items and drink mixes. They've been hard to keep full due to strong customer demand. Couple reasons for the out-of-stocks are still the aluminum can shortage and then the extreme high demand for products. Sales reps have been calling in orders over the phone in order to stay out of the stores. They follow the mask mandate when they're in the stores. We've had strong sales on the weekends, mostly Fridays during the farmer's market. Always been a big plus over there. And then the first and last hours on Sundays. And I didn't know this and found this out after the fact, but Cambridge is closing an hour earlier on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. So nine o'clock instead of 10 on Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays at 5 until the end of the year, is what the manager told me. This has made our last hour of sales nearly $2,000 more than normal. And many customers that come in on Sundays keep saying they think Cambridge is closed. So, interesting, but obviously we're picking up for their hour that they're closing early. And then the last item, staffing obviously has been an issue for us recently. We've been close to being fully staffed and are working on training to the best of our abilities during this crazy time for us. Once we are fully staffed, we've been working on putting together a staff meeting to go over our processes manual in detail with them once that's complete. So, that is it. Any questions?
We'll reap the benefits of that hour early close.
Well, it's looking that way. Yeah, we really, like I said, a couple of Fridays and a couple of Sundays, we literally did almost $2,000 the last hour. So, it's really paid off.
Any questions by the council? All right, no questions. Let's move on to E2.
Great job.
Oh.
Thank you.
I thought he said, "Hey, John." It's always a good job. It's like a broken record, but I guess, you know, we'll just keep saying, "Good job."
It works, it works, right?
You're doing good, sir.
Don't fix what's not broken.
You're making that move look even better. Let's move on to E2, the Mosquito Updates/Discussion. Mr. Sylvester.
Mayor and members of the city council, since our last meeting at Cal is asked to bring back, was asked to try the second fogging agent, which was the Pursuit. Timmy gave that a shot. We sprayed that on the 17th, which was last night. We sprayed with the mosquito down, which was the garlic-based stuff on the 11th of August and looking for some direction on which agent to continue with moving forward.
I don't know if you guys, we all kind of live in different areas of the city. I thought it was kind of crazy when the mosquito spray truck came by my house last night. I literally watched mosquitoes fly out of the air. It was the craziest thing I'd ever seen. It looked like it was raining. I had to like double, like, "What is that?" And here it was mosquitoes only because I went out and looked at the ground and was like, "Wow, apparently that stuff works." I, for one, haven't heard any complaints. I don't know about you, gentlemen?
You know, it seemed like the first time it worked, it seemed to work okay, but it seemed like after the rain has picked up and we get more hatches, it's like it couldn't keep up. It wasn't doing as well as it did earlier in the season. So, it'll be interesting to see how with the new stuff, how much better it will actually.
What does the city of Cambridge do, Dan?
We don't use a green chemical. We use one that kills.
Well, compared to what we did then and what we do now, what we're using now.
What is it that you used last night?
It's called Pursuit.
Pursuit?
Yep.
What's the base of that?
Permethrin.
Oh, yeah, that's what, permadone or, yeah, that's.
How many times a week or month do you use Cambridge spray?
It varies. This year has been less. And I don't know if that's due to budget restraints or just because the mosquito count is low than on previous years, but I remember plenty of times where they'd go out twice a week when they were really severe, but we haven't did that in quite a while.
So, you're kind of monitoring it?
Yeah. Maybe, you know, I don't even think it's been every other week this year. Or on typical years, it's every week, but like I say, I don't know if it's due to budget restraints this year or if it's just the count.
Let the record show that the loud guy in the room, this Councilman Burgley, showed up now.
But that's something that Lucas could probably answer for you if you want to look into it further. Because he's the one that takes care of the mosquito counters. But I don't, I haven't been asked to go spray for a few weeks.
How many times have you sprayed Pursuit?
Twice. We sprayed it on the 28th and we sprayed it on the 17th. And we sprayed, on the 11th, we sprayed the mosquito down.
See, I haven't had any mosquitoes in my backyard since.
I've heard so many mixed complaints. Our seasonal lives on Fourth Avenue, he said, "I haven't done mosquito all summer long."
I had my garage door open last night till midnight, working in the garage. Normally I can't do that last night. I didn't have any issues.
I thought it got better after you sprayed the new stuff.
Okay.
I mean, it was, because it was really bad before. And I don't know if it's just the time of the year changing and it's hard to really say, but I thought it was better.
So, I know Public Works is keeping very good track on paper of what you're, how many times you're spraying, what times you're spraying, what days you're spraying, et cetera.
Yeah, we're tracking everything. I mean, as far as wind conditions, all, I mean, how long it takes, how many miles it took to do it, all that. We're tracking everything all the way through as far as what we're doing.
But you had a south wind last night, I know that. So, I mean, that was.
And do they fill out a sheet every time they go out?
We fill out a sheet every time we go out as far as, yup. They track how many miles it took them to, how many miles they went that night, what the wind speed was, what the wind direction was, how much chemical they went through. I mean, all kinds of, the whole spreadsheet that they've tracked since we started doing it as to the date.
We'll do, we actually have a map that's got a little, you know, it's a little map of the city limits or whatever, you know, the streets. And above that is the sheet you fill out for the wind and the date and temperature and stuff. And then they have three trucks, so each truck is a different color. Then they highlight the streets that they actually went down.
Okay.
So, if you get a resident that calls and say, you know, "You didn't spray my street," you can look back at that sheet and see if we were on that street or we had to go a different street because of the wind direction or maybe that's why you didn't see us, you know, so.
So, what we've been doing is on a, like, say, a north, north-south wind, we might do all the east-west roads. We'll try to do all the cul-de-sacs every time, especially the outskirts. Try to do all those cul-de-sacs inside of town. And if it's an east-west wind, they won't take the north-south streets.
Yep.
We started out spraying, you know, not shutting it off and just leaving it run the whole time. And then we started out where we would, we found out we were running out of chemical. Towards the end of the night, we had to go back and reload again. So, we started doing, let's not double up on the cul-de-sacs. We go down the cul-de-sac, don't drive back out the cul-de-sac with it on, just shut it off. You can do it all remotely from inside the cabs. We've kind of done some of that. We've played around with it a little bit. We've upped it a little bit. We've turned with the garlic base. We've started out with six ounces. The last time around, we did 12 ounces to the 14 gallons of water. So, we've upped our mixture a little bit, so to say, on it. And like I said, I get results that are, nobody, I get very little complaints or people calling about mosquitoes. It's really Facebook. The people respond back saying, you know, lots of different comments. You can look back and see the Facebook posts that people have commented and it's.
Especially your category, I noticed where you're giving them a heads up that you're going to spray. Then all the comments start coming in, you know, to that post. I've noticed that, you know, they're complaining about what you're doing doesn't work. You know, that's why we shifted gears to try something else. Public Works is new. I mean, the city is new to this. You know, it's the first time the city has sprayed for mosquitoes in God only knows how long. I'd have to look back, but.
And it's, I mean, all the weather has so much to do with it. I mean, if it's too windy, we just, we can't go out and waste the chemical.
I mean, I'm sure you could just stop by Councilman Collison's house and he'll be in his garage. Just stop and ask him questions. He'll educate you.
Or, I mean, if it's going to rain tomorrow, then what's the point in going out and spending two grand on chemical the night before? You know, so, and that's something that maybe the public just, they don't understand that part about it, so.
Councilor Collison, do you guys, Cambridge, do you go by, is it complaint-driven or is it just, it's been a couple of weeks? We should probably try it? Or don't you guys do counts, mosquito counts?
Mosquito counts, but sometimes I think it's complaint-driven as well because it's where the counters are. It might be different on a different side of town, kind of. So, it's nice to hear people, I think, you know, here that let you know, hey, they're really bad on this side of town or they might not be bad on the other side of town, but it's, they don't know then that you guys can kind of, you know, figure out your schedule, you know.
And that's where with Facebook, I really don't know where people, where the comments are coming back from. It's just a name and a comment. You know what I mean? You really don't know where they live or nothing like that. People don't post that. So, unless you know them, you don't know where they live. So, it's hard to go back and say, "Well, okay, this was northwest corner is really bad. They complain every time. Okay, we can do that different." They're all over the board. Nobody says where they're at or anything like that. So, it's hard to track that part of it.
Yeah. And like if, like, say you had two sprayers. Typically, like with ours, one's for heavier mosquito area. The other ones might not be. So, one will go out in this one area because it's more woods or more holding ponds in that area. So, the count is a little higher. So, they'll put the stronger one in that area, so.
Or maybe when you do do that post, maybe it wouldn't hurt to put on there if you have any education or information about your neighborhood and you wouldn't be bashful to contact Public Works or post your address. We can definitely look into it. I don't know if something of that realm to better track it on your end, you know, and make it easier for you.
I think for here, it seemed like it was always worse on, you know, closer you get to the river, whether it be north side of 5 or south side of 5, it seemed worse. And then, but now we've got the development on the east side of 65 where there's some wetlands and stuff up that way. I don't know anybody that lives over there personally, but towards the golf course, you know.
I know for a while on Main Street, and I mentioned it to you, that I couldn't be outside a month ago. And now, I'm not joking you, it was probably the craziest thing I'd ever seen last night was watching that truck go by. And after I couldn't see no more fog, I walked outside and literally them things, it was dropping like rain. They were just on the ground and I was like, "That is crazy. That's going to be the coolest thing I've ever seen." So, I know you're getting them.
I do.
But are you getting the new hatchlings is my worry, you know? I mean, it rains tonight. They're going to hatch in the morning.
Yep. But it'll, you know, if you don't get any rain, that stuff will, like, especially the, for peridone or the stuff you're using, it'll actually cling to the grass, leaves, and then a mosquito can come in contact with that three days later and it'll die. So, if they, but provided that it's raining, wash it off.
So, they come back and feed their young, so to speak? They're kind of killing them off themselves?
So, you're not only killing them that night, you're spraying them, but you're still killing them, you know, three, four days. They say it's, some of the stuff has a seven-day kill, but.
Did you write an article in the Isanian about spraying for mosquitoes?
I did for the spring or the summer one. I haven't, I didn't write anything on mosquito this time.
Which you were kind of fairly new to it at that time, too.
Yeah.
Maybe next year we'll rewrite it and throw a lot of information and education in it and.
Sure.
You know, and just cram it down their throats. I don't know what else we can do. I mean, we're trying to do the, you know, our due diligence and killing the pests off. I mean, I couldn't sit out in my backyard last year at this time and this year I can.
It's a definite improvement.
Absolutely. So, I guess the direction Mr. Sylvester's looking is, do we want to go with then or now for what we're spraying?
No.
I agree.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Do you, as far as mosquito counters, I mean, do we have, we don't have anything like that. I mean, is that something you think you need or?
We're, it takes us about three hours to do the entire town. I mean, we're covering it pretty darn good as far as, I mean, east-west roads, north-south roads. We're, you know, I mean, we're able to do the whole town in that three hours, three hours and 15 minutes. You know, I don't know if there's areas that are worse than others. We're hitting areas all the same.
Do you, do we have any employees that live in town?
Any what?
Any employees that actually live in town.
Yes, I've been asking our employees who live in town.
Okay, there you go. There's your mosquito counters.
Yeah.
Easier, I think, and cheaper. Less hassle for you.
Is that night the best time to do it or you do that because the residents are in on it?
Say that again?
I say, do you do it at night because the residents are in on it or because it's the best time to do it?
We've been doing it, one, it's kind of been, we start getting complaints, we go out and do it. It's not really, it's kind of complaint-driven. It's got, certain events are coming up. We're doing it those times those events are coming up. And like Dan said, a lot of the weather has to play with it, too. The weather, you know, if it's going to rain tomorrow, it doesn't pay to do it tonight. It's, we're going to, it's kind of, what's the weather pattern look like doing it? Is it a holding pattern or what's going to happen? We've been trying to follow that. And it's really key as far as wind speed and stuff like that when we spray to even be able to go out.
I've caught you out twice now when I've been out walking at 10 o'clock at night.
That's when they're at their peak. It's usually between, say, nine and 11 o'clock at night, mosquitoes are at their peak. If you haven't been out late, if you're around a campfire in your backyard, you know, it's even before we sprayed. Brightwater, 11 o'clock, poof, mosquitoes are gone. Why that is, I don't know. It's just their peak, their feeding hours is like nine, nine.
Yeah, and we try to spray when they're the most active, at dusk.
I made the joke earlier today when I talked to Mr. Sylvester. I think that garlic concentrate, they had their little matchbox bars, you know, and they were sitting there using it as a cocktail. This stuff messes you up, man. Just drink it, you know? And now, now they're actually dying off because it's a little more serious now. So, now it is. I did get one complaint to let the council know. A resident reached out to me via Facebook. He jumped in front of our truck, our city truck, and stopped it and then started screaming at the Public Works employee. Wanted to know what he was spraying. And he explained he was spraying for mosquitoes and he reached out to me via Facebook saying, "How come we weren't informed?" I continued on to say, "Via Facebook and the city webpage, we have informed the residents." "Well, what if you don't have the ability for internet?" I wanted to say, "Well, then how are you reaching out to me on Facebook?" But I didn't say that. I just kindly told him that.
Unless he was speaking for other people.
Possibly. You know, his elderly, he did mention the elderly in his neighborhood.
And be a nice neighbor and go tell them then.
I mean, he mentioned a mailer, but I did say that would be quite costly to the taxpayers to send out a mailer.
We talked about that though, about attaching different things to the water bills. I don't remember when that was.
Do we put it in the Isanian?
Yeah, I just asked that. And he said he did do an article at the beginning of the spring, you said, right, Matt?
But the only problem is you can't, he doesn't know when he's going to be able to spray because it's all weather-driven. If we get, all next week it rains every single day, he's going to have to go out and spray after that. And he can't spray during that, so it's.
And to me, it sounded like this gentleman was, "Send me a letter tonight saying that you're going to spray tomorrow." That's just not feasible. I don't know how, but I did tell him that I would tell his concern to the council. He, "Will you be spraying a pesticide in our neighborhood without informing us?"
Just tell him you're spraying Jack Daniels.
He'll be following the truck around. Let's not.
You know, some cities use like a mass text. It sends out, like the school district does, it sends out a mass text message. But I don't know what the costs are involved with that.
Yeah, council member, we don't really have that kind of technology currently. We could always get that, but that's not something that we currently possess. We didn't end up putting it in on the utility water bills because he did the nice article in the Isanian, which did a lot more explaining of like how you can also reduce mosquito populations within your yard. And it was a good article and stuff. So, I mean, what we get on our utility billing, unless we change our software to go to a full page versus the postcard, is we get one sentence, it's a very short amount of characters, so you can't partially put on too much there. But I don't think sending out notifications beyond what we're doing of website and Facebook, we have a, right currently, a way to get that out to people when it's right before we're spraying each time.
I think, I believe that's what Cambridge does, is just post something on their website and Facebook page.
And that's exactly what we're doing. I don't know what, how more transparent we can be.
Over the years, they get used to, if they see a strobe light coming down the street after nine o'clock, they know.
They're pulling their animals and their children in the house.
And Public Works did start doing that right after that comment that you had shared with us, that that was effective. He started, they started doing that immediately himself.
They'll get used to that and they'll, they might be out in the yard and they'll see it come down the street. So, if they prefer, they can go inside or, you know, I've seen people come outside, yay, and dance around in the fog. But everybody's a little different.
I think no matter what you do, you're going to miss somebody. Someone's going to complain.
I agree.
Yeah. That's why, I mean, I was going to say the strobe light kind of gives a pre-warning for people. But once they get used to knowing what that means, truck with the strobe light coming down the street at night.
It's all, it's not only new to us, it's new to them.
Yeah.
So, hopefully things changing it better for you and the crew, Mr. Sylvester. Any other questions that you have, Mr. Sylvester?
Nope, I'm good to go.
Any questions by the council?
Great job.
Thank you.
Darn good job. E3, Chapter 87 Discussion on Pigeons. We do have the individuals in the audience in regards to this. If you would like to step up to the podium here, gentlemen. And you called Ms. Wood and myself expressing your concern, and I'd just like you to do the same to the council, if you would, please.
Okay. So, just hit the button on that.
It's on.
Just operate into the mic. Okay. So, we're at 500 Chaparral Trail. We got about three and a half acres. It's between my neighbor and I. We have about seven acres. And I think we were just, we were just put into the city last year. So, what we do is we raise pigeons. We got about 100, 130 pigeons. We have a big barn in the back, about 24 by. 32? About 24 by 32. And what we do is we grab those pigeons and we train them to fly around our yard. And we take them down to Bloomington, we let them go, and then they make their way back home. You know, and then we go farther. So, we take them to Verribole, we drop them off in Verribole, and then they make their way back home, you know? And the whole point of it is to compete with other pigeon racers around the city. So, whichever one gets home first from whichever location we drop them off is the winner. And we are registered nationally. We are registered with the state as well and we are in a federation pigeon club.
And your worry was the city.
Yeah, so we had a complaint, I got a letter in the mail. We had a complaint saying that pigeons aren't allowed, but chickens are. So, I just wanted to address that.
Who is the letter from?
We'll raise chickens, I guess, huh?
The letter is from the chief of police. It was a court violation.
Okay.
Which it is. So, now he's, what he wants to ask this council is, we've allowed chickens. Why not pigeons in his case? I mean, he's not only nationally, he's state-certified.
I had a friend that does that. I went one time and it was pretty amazing.
Every time I drive around now, since the last time I've seen you gentlemen, I see pigeons and I'm like, "Oh, I wonder if that's one of theirs. Oh, I wonder if that's one of theirs." I see them everywhere and now I just, that's all I keep thinking about now. Pigeons, I think, are a lot more quieter than chickens. I mean, they're both pretty quiet, but.
Yeah, they're quieter and they don't go to, my pigeons, they don't go to another houses. Yes, they just get right into the cage, get in. When I let it get out, they go out, fly, they come in right in.
I personally don't see any problem with that. I agree with Mayor Johnson. I think they're a lot quieter than chickens. We're allowing chickens. I don't think pigeons are any dirtier than chickens would be, so.
So, I guess I'd be curious, did you get, chief, have you received any complaints from the public?
Just the one complaint that was transferred to the CSO, which was these gentlemen here. So, we just told to hold off so council could discuss that. And if you look in that packet, this issue was discussed quite in-depth in 2011 with all the research and stuff. Because that was, I understand that 2011 chickens weren't allowed in the city either. So, but pigeons were added to that for the same thing. So, there's a lot of information in that packet as far as other cities, their ordinances and what their requirements are. So, that's something that, you know, that's something the council's looking at is changing the ordinances. We gotta be careful of just saying pigeons are allowed without.
Right. See, I mean, so you guys have, you know, you've been doing it for a while. You got a barn set up for it. You got the acreage. Where, you know, I obviously probably want 100 pigeons on my small lot.
No.
So, kind of like what we did with the chickens, you know, we, is that something we should do?
My question, I don't even know, are pigeons, do they carry any diseases or anything we have to worry about as far as that?
Probably not anymore than a chicken does.
Well, I wouldn't think so either, but I'm just asking the question.
I mean, they're in the air more than.
Is it the same as chickens? I mean, we, chickens carry minimal diseases to pigeons?
Yes, I know pigeons are, you know, they stay within themselves. They're less likely to carry any diseases compared to chickens. I mean, we vaccinate our chickens and they are on a special diet. Our pigeons, they're on a special diet.
They, they helped me.
Oh.
Yeah.
I just wonder if pigeons taste like chickens.
We take very good care when the pigeons, it's the only way I keep a lot of my kids out of trouble, you know, because they.
They tend to the pigeons.
Yeah, and see, like, I mean, like, right now, it was this training season, I had to wake up at 4:00, 4:00 my pigeons in the crates. Let them release, like, last night releases by 15 miles northern Albert Lee. Because this weekend I start a competition and it's in Norwood Highway, the first one. And I had to wake up at 4:00, I had to drive her down, release it. My wife waiting for them. My daughters clean up, they feeding and everything. So, all my family is involved. I used to, I am a coach for a soccer, for the kids, too. I cast these guys aside a little. And now we have to stop it because a lot of the parents, they scared because the.
For sports.
For the sports. And now it's the only thing what we got to do.
So, are you the dad and these are your?
Yes.
Yeah.
Which sounds okay.
Both of these are his boys. He's got more kids than these.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I'm sure he does. He said daughters, so I assume.
The only thing I got to say is we have to be careful in how we. The only thing I gotta say is we have to be careful in how we word this, as, as Councilman Carlson said. He wouldn't want a hundred pigeons in his ne- his next door neighbor's house, but if we put this in, in the ordinance. We're gonna have to stem, you know, limit it to the amount per, you know, quarter acre lot size in town. Versus where they got three and a half acres. I mean, they've been put in a bad situation. This whole annexation has been, just keeps rolling in. Bad and bad and more, more and more things.
So many pigeons do you have?
Right now.
He already said.
It's like.
About a hundred?
It's like under, by the end of the season, maybe we only go get like seventy. There's a lot of get lost.
So.
And, and really, we only fly, we only fly outside, uh, it's like forty. Every, everything else is a breeding ones and, and we keeping in the case all the time.
Is that, I'm just thinking, would it be just, would it be the easier thing to do is just grandfather them in while we deal with a new ordinance?
That, that also.
For the rest of this.
I mean, the ordinance states verbatim prohibited animals, a- animals. No person, firm, or, uh, corporation shall keep, harbor, feed, or raise cows, horses, hogs, or any other livestock. Chickens, or other poultry, or pigeons within the city of Isantin.
So that actually doesn't pertain to anything right now because chickens is stated in there still.
Yeah, that's, it's old because chickens, we've already changed that for.
But this ordinance is still on the books?
If I may.
One you've just read?
Mayor and council, no, he's reading the old one where, which, um, Chief Myers included in the packet that adds when, that just to show when pigeons were added. Because prior to two thousand eleven, pigeons weren't excluded out of chapters eighty-seven.
Where's the new one? Is that on here, Chief?
Mayor and council, if I may, um, attach those chapter eighty-seven animals, that is the new ordinance. It does say livestock chicks or poultry or pigeons, not in accordance with this chapter. And then we talk about chickens, so that means they're still permitted because of, it says the layout and what you can do in this chapter with chickens.
So Mayor, the next page after the one you're reading is our current ordinance. The one you're reading now is the old, when it was added in two thousand eleven. Next page shows what we currently have, which allows chickens, and then we have, as Ms. Solomon stated, the whole section on chickens. The one thing that I do wanna add, back from two thousand eleven, the discussions, the reason why, um, and as Chief Myers stated, it had gone through a thorough discussion, multiple meetings through, at that time, planning commission before council, was because there was some, um, decision of the council made that the keeping of animals should be contained within your property. And it sounds like from reading through minutes that that was the ultimate reason. There had been some back and forth, but why it did get added to the pro- prohibited list. Because they weren't able to, because they fly for racing pigeons. Um, if the council is interested in having them have this, I think as Carlson mentioned, we should look at doing something similar like we do with the chickens and having some certain parameters, whether it's acreage, some are allowed or not. Grandfathering though, is not likely going to be something that the attorney suggests. Typically, we stay away from that. Um, but we can do, if your acreage is this big, you're allowed to have this many, and we can do domestic pigeons, which then would include racing pigeons.
Yeah, but I don't wanna hinder these gentlemen. If they have a hundred pigeons, I'm not gonna tell them, I mean, they have three acres of land. That's.
That's up for the council to decide, but then you can have racing pigeons, fancy pigeons, and sporting pigeons. If you wanna do, all domestic pigeons are allowed. Um, and then if Chief Myers wanted to give his point on if we wanna do registering, so some cities do licensing, some do registering. Um, kinda like what you do with a dog in this, in the city, so at least then you're, they're permitted, but they do have to get authorization from.
I don't think that's a bad idea.
Oh, I was gonna say.
What, do we do that with the chickens though? Licensing?
We didn't, but we have such a small number allowed on the chickens.
Okay, got it.
Would you gentlemen have a problem with paying a registration fee?
Uh, no, no, it's also what the city of Minneapolis do, uh, St. Paul do the same thing. And they only allow seventy-five pigeons in the city.
Seventy-five?
And that's in the city?
In the city.
In the city.
In the city. Like Woodbury, Northern Woodbury, they allow.
Have, have you ever had more than a hundred?
Uh, only when I live here in Isantin. When we live downtown, we got, we had to go by the. And, you know, when this is the predation season, yeah, we go a little more, but when they start training a lot of, they get lost, so the hogs take it. Or stuff like that, yeah. But, but that, by, by the end of the year, we are way less pigeons. And the spring, we, we.
So for us to say a hundred would be a safe number?
Yes, it's a safe number.
Hundred max for.
Hundred max, they have to register. I mean, we could definitely.
With three, if they got three and a half, let's put it at three.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, uh.
You know, I mean.
Acres you have?
It, it's close to a hundred, I, I don't.
No acres.
Not acres.
Acres is like two and a half, maybe like four, more close to four.
Yeah, so between us and our neighbor, we have around seven acres, so they're not really going into anybody's property because.
Right.
We're pretty well covered and we're surrounded by trees, so it's not like anybody sees.
We're just trying to get an idea of how we would write it for acreage minimum.
So, so the consensus from the council is, is we're gonna work with you. We'll make sure that you can keep these. But for legal terms, we have to figure how many pigeons can you have, paying registration fee. Uh, there, there might be other things that we'll attach, but we'll work with you gentlemen.
We should maybe hear what Chief Myers has to say.
I mean, the, the biggest piece on the registration, I'm not really concerned with the registration fee because I don't think we're gonna have that many pigeon people like we do dog fees. Um, looking at some of the other cities ordinances, the issue that, that pigeons do fly somewhere else, right? So some of those ordinances require, if you want your pigeons to fly, they have to be in good standing with the pigeon club and provide proof to the city. Which that would be the only reason we'd want the registration, not licensing, registration, meaning this person says, I'm registered to the pigeon club, here's my, I'm in good standing. So if we get a complaint, this person's letting their pigeons fly, we know that they're actually flying pigeons, because there's a, I'm sure you can talk to that. There's a big discrepancy between raising pigeons and some guy raging, racing, or raising a bunch of pigeons in their backyard for dog training. And, and so that's kinda the discrepancy for the registration would be just so we know if somebody's letting them fly, if we use. If we're gonna use that terminology in that ordinance.
I mean, I, and you can speak up if you disagree, Chief, but I don't think somebody raising pigeons would be a good thing. But if somebody was racing them?
Well, we allow, we allow people to raise chickens, so I don't.
Yeah, that's true.
Some people probably raise pigeons to sell them for racing.
Are they raising the chickens to eat them though? I think they're using the eggs. Who's gonna eat a pigeon?
Uh, actually, a lot.
Do they really?
Pigeon's good.
Pigeon and dove hunting is.
Barbecue pigeon.
Pretty popular.
Did you, you're talking to the guy that loves his pigeons more than his kids.
I've never heard of it.
You never?
So, so what I, what I'll say is, is if you could give us. Let's keep in mind that he has, did you get a fine or was it just a letter?
No, just a letter.
Okay, so no fine, right Chief?
Not yet, no, we're just waiting on.
Not yet.
Not yet.
So let's.
We can't really act on this in the community whole anyway, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess.
Oh, yeah, we got.
My consensus would be.
Some time.
Yeah.
Let's halt the chief on fining them.
Yeah.
No, the chief, the chief is halting himself, so.
That's good, thanks Chief. And then we'll have to work with the legal department and see what we can do to tweak the ordinance.
I guess, I guess in that whole thing is like Ms. Wood said, and Chief Myers is racing pigeons. As long as, and I'm assuming you're part of a pigeon club already.
Yeah, they stated they are.
You know, and you have, you're, you're registered nationally, statewide. I think we'll have to define that termination on that, on this, as racing pigeons belonging to said groups. Or pigeon group, or nationally registered, that you're actively doing that, and.
That's, uh.
And.
They could probably help us out with some of the terminology.
You've been doing this a while, so I'm sure you could.
Is there state registration and national registration?
Yes.
So, is.
Yeah, there is a club, or clubs in here.
Right.
National, but yeah, I, I belong to one, and also I had to pay my registration for the national.
So if he provided.
Legally and everything.
But not, probably not, everybody might not do the national one, but they might, they probably do the state one, or does everybody do both?
Be a member in the club, you had to register na- national.
Okay. Is there other clubs though that might not require that?
Uh, no, everyone.
Okay.
So if they re, if they.
And we pay the, the fee and, and they do a lot of that stuff. And we had to prove, we got my, the pigeon healthy, and we vaccinated, and all that kind of stuff.
So if they provided that to the city, that would cover what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, the most common one we see is just, all they say is good standing with the pigeon club.
So as, as long as they provided that to you, then we're golden.
One thing I do wanna say to the council on this too, is we gotta be really careful on this slippery slope. Cause the next person's gonna come in and say, I got twenty pigs. The next one's gonna come in and say, I got ten cows. And I got three horses, and I raise Shetland ponies. We gotta, we gotta start.
Well, like chickens, I, I believe it's just for legging purposes, am I correct?
That's what I thought we defined it as. For, we.
There's no livestock be raised, be eaten within city limits.
Yeah, they weren't there for.
So, that's no slaughtering then, yeah.
Slaughtering purposes.
So that would probably, you know, for ours, pigs, if you're raising to eat.
Well, as, as you guys know as well as I do, our attorney's pretty smart and he'll come up with something.
I'm okay with raising pigs, so whatever, whatever they wanna do on their property is fine with me, as long as it doesn't get over the neighbors, but.
Ms. Wood?
Yes, Mayor and council, we can definitely consult our city attorney, but what it ultimately is gonna come down to is what do we wanna allow? Do we want to limit to the R one A district, which is most of the annex parcels, most of those larger parcels within the city? And have it confined to just those, or do we wanna allow it, I mean, that makes it really easy?
Yeah, I agree.
I, I agree, the R one A is the bigger pieces of land within the city, so that would make more sense.
That would make it a lot easier to do this.
Easy.
That will limit us having to discuss a lot of different variables if we just limit to that. So Chief Myers will be able to work on a draft ordinance change on this, and we can bring that forward to council.
That works.
Approval next month.
What do we wanna do for the time being though? Just let them continue as?
He's gonna, it's gonna be idle for now until this goes through council for ultimate decision.
Just continue doing, we don't know nothing. La, 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 we don't know nothing.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Does it, does this?
We'll, we'll change that ordinance.
Does the city still put on, uh, once off community center, well, obviously this year's a little different, the, like the kids' science club or nature club stuff anymore?
The kids' nature, that would be a really fun activity to have them come to. A nature detectives' club has been changed to curious creatures, which has a variety of topics. But that's something that they could possibly work and find out more information, because a lot of people would think that's very fascinating.
Maybe they could do a, do a, a.
Demonstration.
Yeah.
You know.
Can we loop you into a city event too? Can we loop you into a city event and educate young kids on pigeons?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Sure.
We'll keep in contact.
Yeah. I just, I was fascinated. I, I had a friend that did it.
It's very fun, and, and it's, it's very important, so the kids, they got something to do online. Yeah, it's very, very.
Punctuation.
We might get you free laborers.
I had a friend that did it, he was serious, and he spent thousands of dollars a year on this and.
Well, it sounds like he does too.
And they'd go four or five states away and release them to have them fly all the way back to Minnesota. It's just, it's crazy.
Right, right now, in the news, and you can, you can look at it, just like, I think last week, somebody get deep, he, somebody take all his pigeon. And the reward is twenty thousand dollars. And it's in the news, in South Carolina.
Wow.
I think, yeah, you guys can win some pretty good money too. I refer to some of the cash.
Most of it was, I enjoy doing it.
Right, yeah.
You know, some people, they do it for business, but.
We'll, we'll, we'll take care of it, gentlemen. So, no worries, okay?
On the, on the count though, for the pigeons, so, on the thing we have here, it says a hundred and fifty pigeons is about what you had, but that might have been some time ago. But, I mean, what, what's the max that you would have at any given time, just so we make it high enough?
He said a hundred would be a safe number.
A hundred is a safe number, okay.
Maybe just, this is like fifty, sixty flyers and twenty persecutors.
Okay.
So, yeah, I asked that question, I already called someone.
Well, just on here, it says a hundred.
Yeah, I, I read that too, that's why I asked. Was, safe number would be a hundred.
Okay.
I wanna thank you guys for, uh, coming in and, and handling the situation like you did.
Yes.
Sometimes we don't get resonance.
You didn't, you didn't get irate.
Handle, exactly.
Screaming at me, or these guys. I appreciate that.
You educated us and, uh, yeah, we really appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. You need anything else, you know how to get ahold of me.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a good day, fellas.
I don't think we need a bunch of tiers on this, but these gentlemen here said there was in Minneapolis and St. Paul. I think we at least need two tiers where someone with one acre can have at least ten pigeons or something.
Typically from, they probably could answer it better than me though, but like my friend that used to do it. Very rarely did anybody raise pigeons and not, and not have at minimum fifty or more.
He's saying acreage law, he's saying, they have three and a half, four, but what if somebody had one acre?
That's what I'm saying, there, you won't find too many people that are in that sport that only have ten pigeons.
Yeah, that's why I don't.
I'm not saying you're wrong, what I'm saying though is, we bring these guys in to demonstrate to the public, and they're saying they're in Minneapolis-St. Paul. I'm telling you, there's not a lot of people in Minneapolis-St. Paul with three and a half.
As Councilman Lundine said though, Councilman Burgley, is we're in a slippery slope. So for us to narrow it down to the R one A district. It's perfect. Oh, it is one acre. It's one.
It does have people who have, sorry, Mayor and council, it does have people who have one acre or larger in that district that was created.
Well, there you go, Councilman Burgley.
Sorry, taking care of an.
So whether you have one acre or three acres, you'd be allowed a hundred birds.
There you go.
Okay. I just think, I just think that if these people start going public, we ask them to come in and do demonstrations, all of a sudden someone's gonna go, mommy, I wanna pigeon.
Well, I mean, they come in with.
We only have half an acre, and they're gonna come back here and we're gonna have, we'll be doing.
Sorry, you can't do it on a half of acre, you need an acre or more.
I mean, they come in with reptiles and alligators and things like that, you know, that doesn't mean they're gonna come out and go out and.
That's an exotic pet though. I mean, somebody in the room could, could testify to exotic pets. Not saying any names, Chief Myers.
I just have a hard time saying no to a kid that wants, wants five pigeons, like, somebody could have five chickens, why can't they have five pigeons?
I'm sorry, you don't.
I'm just throwing out my thoughts, so.
You, you don't have an acre, I'm sorry, little kid. I'll tell you what though, you can store them at this gentleman's farm and he'll educate you and teach you how to keep those pigeons.
Well, you know, my, my children showed llamas at the state fair, and they never owned a llama. They just go rented, you know, llama five blocks from their house and.
We got one of those right in the county.
They board them.
So.
What is that place called?
Here you go, Chief, you could start a boarding for pigeons for little kids in town that don't have more than an acre.
His dad does that too, doesn't he, your dad? He's kind of a fan.
E-mooze.
They taste good.
All right, let's move on here. We'll move on to E four, the safety training renewal update.
Thank you, Mayor. So Mayor and council, we currently have, and we have for a long time, every five years, we have safety training, RFP. That goes up and we contract with a vendor to give our, give the city safety training for employees from all different departments. Uh, they manage our aware program, they manage our SDS database program for chemicals. Um, can give reporting for tier two reports that we have mandatory to report on. And also give the actual trainings, um, to our employees and then specific ones to those who need it that are required by OSHA. And doing OSHA compliance. I've done extensive research on this, Ms. Brooks has assisted in that. And we think it's best to go away from going with a specific vendor with an RFP. We'd like to take on safety training in-house, and where we manage it, we're gonna work with the League of Minnesota Cities, and they have an online safety training program. That's a lot more affordable. Currently, what we pay is approximately sixty-eight hundred without add, that's just the base cost. Without adding in additional trainings, excluding PD, because they have their own that they need to do, but this is for the other employees. It would bring that down to below three thousand, and plus we would have better value-added trainings. We would be able to manage them and have, um, easy reporting to, if we did get audited by OSHA, to be able to prove who's gone to what trainings. We'd have a lot more control over it. And like I said, the value-added stuff is we could actually, like, right now, we don't get any training for our public works specific to water and wastewater. We could get those programs, have that implemented into our program and have them very well trained. So if there was any kind of accident, it can't, it wouldn't be because they didn't know safety precautions of a certain chemical or things like that. So my request is to ask for council, if, if you have any issues with that, and we can move forward with what we've done in the past. Otherwise, go this new route, save a few thousand dollars, and have better training for our staff.
I already know what Councilman Gordon's gonna say.
Well, not necessarily. Do we have, do we have time to do that?
That's what I was gonna ask.
But here's, here, here's one thing I wanna add to you. In the construction industry, OSHA standards are toolbox talk. Toolbox talks, which is all OSHA-based training, which you do once a week at a safety meeting. And that was more than adequate for OSHA's response, and this would be no different.
No.
So they have a number of required, uh, like right-to-know, uh, bloodburn pathogens are certain that are required for all staff. And then there are certain that are required for public works, um, if you're working with trenching, if you're working with silica, or, yeah, there are certain things. Confined space, those all have required trainings. Um, so it would mat, hit all of that, plus we get a database of over two hundred and twenty. Um, so it would mat- hit all of that, plus we get a database of over two-hundred-and-twenty different training modules that actually have other things like leadership training in there, which we send people to leadership training and there would be no added additional cost for that. To answer Councilmember Gordon's question, we do have time, we started this process early enough, our current contract, uh, with Save Fisher ends November thirtieth of this year. And really it is a sign up with the leagues and we're hoping to create a resource, uh, safety group with two other cities local to us, so we can all share in the cost, which brings it down even more.
That was my main concern, was is this manageable by our staff? And if you ladies are.
Ms. Brooks and I are very passionate about safety and we have some really great ideas we'd like to implement.
I served on multiple different companies and I worked for a safety team, and that's what we did, our safety team met once a month where we would get all our OSHA safety requirements out. So that every job site had all the safety updates that they would do once a week. And basically every time we got done with lunch or coffee, we would sit down for fifteen minutes, go through it, sign it, and it was done. And you can get a lot of that stuff online from OSHA at no cost.
This is, um, Cambridge does this, what you're speaking of, and this basically employs, they can do it at any hour in their eight-hour shift. And you sit down in front of a computer and you do an online class, basically, um, you, you can gear it towards their work schedule.
Yeah.
So, so the consensus I'm getting is we're okay with doing this in-house?
Yeah, they're.
Absolutely.
If the time's there, why not?
Charge forward.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Wood added E five, which I have no clue what it is, Ms. Wood?
E five is to bring up where we are with our building official applications, we had posted for that position for about two and a half weeks, that did close either end of the year, I believe. Um, and we received a number of applicants from that, um, search and three, two for sure, possibly three, once we ask a couple more questions, are qualified for the requirements that we posted that we would need to act, to have a licensed building official. So what staff and I is looking for is next direction, do we wanna proceed and interview these, um, individuals to see if they are gonna be the best fit for our SAMI and what we, our needs are. Um, and, and still again, hold off, which we have time, we have, we figured about till September, if we need to actually make the ultimate decision of going with the RFP for contracted services versus in-house, just wanna gauge where council's at.
I'd go for the interviews.
I'd, I'd go for the interviews, too, but my question is, is do we wanna let the staff do the first interview and then bring them in front of the council for a second interview, or do we just want the staff to do one hundred percent everything?
I don't think the council really needs to interview them, I think our staff is knowledgeable enough to choose who they want.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's my opinion, anyway.
Councilman Gordon, you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, I trust them.
They, they, ultimately, they have to work side by side with whoever they choose and they're gonna want that person to succeed, so I think they'll do a great job picking the.
Well, your job's getting easier and easier, Ms. Selman.
And that is very typical, that staff does do that and then Ms. Selman does work very closely with this individual, so it'd be great to.
I wasn't suggesting anything, it was just a question. So go forward with interviews.
Perfect, and we will report then findings right after that, thank you.
Uh, E six, also, I don't know what that one is.
Yeah, E six, thank you, Mayor, I wanted to report to the council, um, the, I, I Sandy County sent out a memo letting, um, other cities, entities within the county, what they plan on spending their CARES relief, um, allocation plan. So I wanted to share that with council, so you knew, and then ask you a couple of follow-up questions for us, as Mike and I, Mr. Becker and I continue to work on it. So they have decided that county infrastructure, PPE, IT, and public safety payroll reimbursement, um, such as technology payroll and PPE, they're allocating approximate costs at two-point-nine million. Small business and nonprofit relief, uh, ten-thousand-dollar grants to reimburse lost profit, about one-point-five million of their allocation. School relief for reimbursement for technology and PPE costs, three-hundred thousand. Individual housing relief, uh, they plan to give money to Lakes and Pines for them to administer, cause they have the proper channels to do so, a hundred thousand dollars. So I wanted to inform you of that, but then I also wanted to have some follow-up on, is there any interest now that you know that the county are doing those things, do we have interest in also using some of our four-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand allocated, allocation to those similar things? Do we want a small business relief that you want, Mr. Becker and I to explore, do you want individual housing relief, um, such as giving money to Lakes and Pines, cause they do service our, our city as well, do we wanna consider those? And then the last one, and the last one would be the fire district, we're still putting numbers together and we hope to give you a better outline next month. Um, but do we wanna consider doing the fire district, giving them specific PPE, like what are their needs and purchase that to give? That is, by the way, of the city attorney, the easiest, because we don't have to know if they took any other funds or what they're gonna spend it on, there's less requirements, or are we looking to give them a lump sum?
I think we should, uh, personally, I think we should stay in-town first. The county's getting their share of their money just as well as we are.
Right.
Um, and I think our residents deserve the best that we can give them, in my personal opinion, so I think we need, we need to take care of our personal needs at the city hall first, the, the city itself.
And PD.
So, yeah, that's, that's, can, that's city hall, police department.
Yep.
I mean, it's all city entity, public works.
Entities, liquor store.
Any city entity should be taken care of first.
Care first and foremost, and then I'd like to see something going to the fire department, and if it is, if it is by purchasing those PPEs for them that they wanna purchase. Maybe that's the easiest way of doing it, our attorney is advising us, that would be the easiest way of doing it, and by chance, we do have a fire district meeting tomorrow night.
And even if, even if Chief Myers was to order one thing, he could maybe double up on it to give it to the fire department, you know, then, I don't know if that's.
We can, we can, it is allowable because they are, um, they are contracted and they give the good for the entire commu- the entire city.
Yep.
We can donate to them specific dollar amounts as well, I'm just trying to figure out, that's what we wanna look at, maybe it depends on how much we have and what I think that Mr. Becker and I will end up proposing is, here's how much we have after we've done software upgrades, city hall upgrades, PD things, PPE, all those things, we're gonna come to a dollar amount, they're like, okay, how do we wanna allocate the remaining funds? Do we also wanna give some to Lakes and Pines, do we wanna give some to directly to fire districts, so I'm just trying to gauge kinda what your thoughts are, you know, before we put this plan together.
Well, I know Fire Chief Jankovic is, he's really hot and heavy that whatever we don't use, he wants. So, I mean, and, and I told him, and Mayor Johnson told him the same thing, the city of I Sandy comes first.
Yeah, we're gonna take care of ours first.
Ours first.
I think we need a COVID police car.
Is the county gonna disperse any of their funds to any of the fire departments within their county?
I have not been told, I, I don't know, maybe Councilmember Lundin, do you know, has, uh, Chief Jankovic reached out to the county for funding?
He's reached out to the townships and that's like talking to that podium, there's nobody's there.
I just don't, I, I don't think we need to give any to them if they're gonna receive from, receive, receives from, from I Sandy County.
I doubt the county is going to.
I doubt the county does anything for.
I don't think the county will.
I, I think to your point, Councilmember, and I think the reason why the attorney said it's much cleaner, so to say, is to give them, like, what do you need, five thousand dollars in PPE, we'll buy and donate that to you. Because then we, we don't care if they got funding from anywhere else, we don't have to track it.
Okay.
If we give them, let's say, a five thousand or ten, whatever amount of a donation in cash, we actually have to show us proof that you had COVID expenses that cover that. Now write an affidavit that you didn't receive funding from any other township, county to cover that, I mean, there's a lot bit more.
So if you want, I mean, myself or Councilman Lundin, cause he is on that board, can ask them if they need donations.
Well, one thing that would be really helpful for Mr. Becker and I is to know, um, if, if at a minimum, which I see this as a minimum, we would purchase PPE or new garb or whatever it is, what are we thinking? Is it five gra- a grand, is it twenty grand?
Yeah, that's, that was my thought, is I know that they would like to get, I know that Chief Jankovic said that they'd like to buy different turnout gear, not, not the turnout gear that they wear for wearing, rocking into a fire. It's basically a, a set of clothing.
Like a hazmat suit.
It's like a hazmat, but it's not.
So get some costs on that, that would be, just general ballpark, would be very helpful if we do that.
Yep. And I will, I will talk that over with them at that point, um, I think we have till, what, November?
We have until November fifteenth and then we have to turn it over to the county to give them that additional month or so to use it, but.
Yep.
I don't think we're going to have, especially with these other outlets of being able to give some, um, financial relief to our city residents, I don't know if we will have any to give back, that's really not our, our goal. Um, it's to try to keep it here in our city.
I think, I think if we can, you know, cut some costs on things, on the PPEs, you know, computer update, computer soft, software update, some of the money that we've had to pay out for labor, you know, for people that were in here. That all comes and reflects to our bottom line at the end of your budget. So, that's gonna help our residents that much further down the line.
But here, here's the question that I have, and, and it may sound silly, but it's, it's a legit question that I'm gonna ask you, is, um, I can use Chief Myers' department, for instance. He uses that police car to respond to a potential COVID incident, he also uses that computer to get that call from his dispatcher. And he also uses that radio to receive that call, so why wouldn't all those fall in, in this realm?
And Mayor, I'm not saying that they wouldn't, they potentially would, if Chief Myers wants to put together a memo to me, uh, stating that these are the, this is what I'm requesting for my department, this is what it fits within the guidelines, it definitely could.
Go ahead, yeah.
Above, yeah, I think what they're probably looking more for is above and beyond what you normally would use for your day-to-day routines. What have you guys had to add for PPE?
It has to be a substantial difference from what you typically do.
They gotta use the radio for all the calls, that didn't change cause of COVID, they didn't have to add more radios or computers in their squad cars, you know what I mean? So I don't know if that would.
And that's what I was gonna get at, is, is that it would have to be a Pacific car that's only used for that purpose, it can't be just a standard squad car that they use for anything, I mean, there's gray areas there.
It's the pandemic car.
Well, one thing is that, I mean, yeah, we have COVID and, I mean, we didn't have an emergency management command unit, like, I've heard that some, um, entities are using it or something similar to that, it's very gray, unfortunately, it makes it more difficult. As Mr. Becker and I try to look at what's allowed and they're changing, kinda like with the whole CARES Act for, um, you had to give the sick leave to people. It was rolled out that it was mandatory and then they changed the rules as you went, you just had to keep changing and changing and telling staff, well, now we're doing this, now we're doing that. It, this is kinda the same way, but a lot of it boils down to the discretion of the chief executive officer, which is myself, and writing, uh, detailed list of, here's why I think, based off all the information that I have received, why I believe that this qualifies. That documentation's going right with what we're purchasing, so when we get audited, which we get audited every year, that supporting document of this is why I referenced this item, this out guideline from the treasure, US treasure, and it said in here, I interpreted that to mean X, Y, Z. So we're trying to ke- cover every base and interpret it as best we can.
I know it's really tough, because it's that gray area and you don't wanna get caught in that gray area, and then you get caught in that gray area, we're gonna have problems later on, so.
We're gonna raise a lot of eyebrows in years.
Yeah, and I do, I do like the attorney's recommendation that if we do give to the fire district, just buy what they need and donate it to them. Because now they don't have to show proof of what it was purchased for, I know Al, Al had brought up, he said, we can buy a separate washer and dryer, we can buy this and we can buy that. It, and I get that, but what's gonna happen when the pandemic is over, if it ever is over, or if we ever get back to some normalcy? Then that all of a sudden, that thing is gonna be used for washing anything and everything, so, I like the idea better.
I get the impression, though, I mean, if you can, if you can feel honest about however you're justifying spending this money, you're probably okay, you know.
But you, but you should have been at the last fire district meeting, Al was treading on that really dark gray water, he was really treading on how he could spend this money.
Well, but I think that that's, I mean, even the CARES Act and the PPE money, I mean, a lot of that stuff was, you know, if, if you're being honest about, they're not coming to look to try to catch you down the road and say, gotcha, you know, I mean, I think that's kinda what you're saying, too, I mean, they, you gotta be able to justify it, it's gotta be honest, but it, it can be spent, I mean, I've heard, a lot of, a lot of stuff's getting bought that you would think, eh, I don't know about that, but then you think, oh, well, maybe, uh, actually, it's probably okay, you know.
I, I, I think we have to go by our attorney's recommendations and Josie's the one that's gonna have to describe what this is being used for, so.
Pandemic police car.
So I will, I'll get your report.
Pandemic police station.
Hey, pandemic police station, I like it, Councilman Gordon.
But I don't think that four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand's gonna cover it, um, I will, I will, uh, I will get a report from the fire district tomorrow.
Yeah, it's not.
That'd be great, thank you.
So.
We answer everything, Ms. Wood?
Yes, thank you very much, council.
I definitely like the idea, though, of, um, helping out the small businesses in town that have.
I, um, I.
Except for the maybe the pizza place and the liquor store, I think they, they're surviving just fine.
Again, it.
I personally.
It might work out, it might work out better by, um, like, you know, working with Lakes and Pines and working with Initiative Foundation, because then we don't have to do that tracking of, did you get any other assistance, and they have all the applications already done. We're also exploring, cause we have, um, revolving loan fund applications, is that a best use, so we're working internally of what's the best way to get this to the people who need it in our city.
Cause actually, uh, what surprised me is through this whole process, I have a lot of friends that own businesses in town and I was really shocked to see, um, example, a salon owner, since it, they were closed for a long time. But they do not get unemployment through the state of Minnesota.
Nope.
Not if you're self-employed.
Yeah, self-employed, you get zero.
Yep, so.
Yeah, it's depends if they paid in or not, cause.
Did you get any money? Oh, okay, well, yeah, you'd be a medical field, you'd be.
So, yeah, I think it's great to be able to help out the community.
Especially that, I mean, and that's what it's meant for, it's meant to give businesses who haven't gotten any other assistance, those are people like the salon owners and people who haven't, the people who were, um, you know, critical, they couldn't shut down and they went through a ton of stresses.
They couldn't do curb-side haircuts.
I mean, so, yeah, we're looking at all that and it's not to reward the people who took advantage of the other things out there, it's ones that couldn't or didn't know they could or didn't know how to work that application, these are gonna be for you people to help. You know, with the struggles that you had.
And you know, and that, and helping them out, too, word spreads, um, you know, um, other businesses that aren't, and I say.
Wow.
Think, hey, you know, I Sandy might be a great place to own a business, look at how they treat, you know, they're small business owners, so.
I, I think you have the consensus, right, to where the city entities would be number one and then the fire district and then small businesses, if we could, I, I, for us to help residents, I don't think we have enough money to do that. I'd like to, but.
And the county is doing that, so that's great, at the county level, anyone can apply.
Perfect.
And then the fires are red school, I, I, um, I mean, I even got a check.
For what?
I even got a stimulus Jackson mail and I was still working, so.
I did, too.
I, I, you know, um.
I was essential.
Are you getting residents coming and asking for help and you're pointing them to the county then, or what are you doing?
Uh, actually, I haven't received any.
Okay.
Questions or concerns beyond, beyond the, I did take a few phone calls right after the masks or face covering mandate, asking if the city was gonna provide it for their business, I had a couple of phone calls about that, too, specifically, too, um, that includes everyone. But other than that, I haven't gotten anyone, I think people are appreciative that we're not doing late fees for utility bills and we're giving some leniency on that. But I haven't heard any other people like upset or concerned, I mean, either way, I guess.
I mean, I know my mortgage company and a couple of my neighbors, they had different, two, other different mortgage companies, they're delaying their deferred payments for six months. You know, cause they were out of work or whatever, and it's, just goes back on the, it goes on the back end, so you're not paying any late fees, that's, so, so, I mean, there's people out there that are getting some help, which is good.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments from the council?
That's all I have.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Collins, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries five-zero, therefore we stand adjourned.